The March 8th, 2022 meeting of the Carrington School District Board of Directors is called to order. Mrs. Robb, do you mind leading us in questioning?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, and with liberty and justice for all.
Will the secretary please call the roll?
Director Craig.
President.
Director Honchar.
He's not able to be here tonight.
Director Apple.
Here.
Director Sumpert.
Here.
Director Puskar.
Here.
Director O'Brien.
Here.
Director Zalinski.
Here.
Director Boglana.
Here.
Director Schreiber.
Here.
We have a portion of our meeting at the beginning where we invite members of the public to ask any questions on any agenda items. Does anyone have any questions about agenda items tonight?
Yes, but I'm wondering if I should hold off until after, like, are we going to present like the new additions to the health and safety plan?
Yes.
Might be better, yeah, if you wait.
I might as well hear it first. I do have a lot of questions about it, but I thought maybe I'll wait.
We appreciate that.
Okay.
If there's no other, we'll move on. We have some minutes. Actually, John, do you want to do this now?
Can we do the presentation?
Yeah, I can do superintendent's report. I can do it right now. Basically, what I had set up for superintendent's report was to review the changes to the health and safety plan. The current health and safety plan revision was approved at our January school board meeting on January the 18th. The American Rescue Plan, as we mentioned before, requires districts to go through and review the health and safety plan periodically throughout the course of the school year. Recently, as of February 25th, the CDC came out with new guidance in regard to health and safety recommendations for communities in regard to how they go through and identify cases and make recommendations throughout the country. One of the pieces on there was universal masking and in regard to what the CDC recommends for masking. The new guidance published on February 25th basically incorporated the confluence of three types of metrics that they use when making determinations. The metrics that they use have to do with hospitalization, numbers admitted to hospitals, hospital capacity in the local areas, and then also new COVID cases in the area as well. Allegheny County, one of the benefits that we have in regard to hospitals, we do have many hospitals in our local area, which helps with our numbers. The capacity therefore is greater compared to other areas across the country. And then new COVID cases is something that we necessarily can't control independently on our own. However, the recent report that just came out today from Allegheny County indicated that we're, I believe, 725 new cases from the week reporting at the beginning of last week. So CDC now takes, instead of putting into four separate categories, now reduces it down to three. And they determine those as risk levels, so you have high risk, moderate risk, and low risk. And in high risk, masking is recommended, however, in moderate and low risk, masking is not a recommended mitigation strategy for COVID. Currently, in Allegheny County, then, we are designated as low risk. The reports of positive cases, not only in Allegheny County, but then also what have been reported to the school district, have drastically reduced over the past probably six weeks. January was the biggest spike that we had throughout the pandemic. Since that time, the numbers have decreased significantly. At the present time, we have not had any positive cases reported in the past 10 days, so we have no active cases reported to the district, and we also have no students or staff members in quarantine at the present time. So therefore, using that metric and also that being a part of the health and safety plan, following the email that was sent out on the weekend of the 25th, is that basically masking is up to the individual discretion of individuals. Physical distancing, the district will continue to put great efforts into physical distancing with students at a minimum of three feet, and will try to maximize that as best that we can. We do recognize that small group work and interaction of students is extremely valuable. So intermittent use of small group work at distancing of less than three feet is permitted and can be used at the discretion of the teacher. And then areas for serving meals will allow us to make that transition back into cafeteria use only. At the present time, here at the junior, senior high school, we use the cafeteria, we also use hallways. Carnegie Elementary, we use the gymnasium. And at Crafton Elementary School, we use both, well, we use two classrooms and we also use the cafeteria. So what the plan allows for is to transition back to the full use of cafeteria space. Isolation and quarantine, individuals who are infected with COVID-19 will still continue to work closely with Allegheny County Health Department, working with isolation recommendations. So if positive cases are reported, Allegheny County will implement the isolation for what currently is five days. And then upon return to school, it's recommended that individuals who are infected with COVID-19 after their five-day period of isolation, that they wear a mask in public, so we will strongly recommend to all individuals infected with COVID-19 to wear a mask for five calendar days following their readmittance into the school. In regard to quarantine, what we will do is we'll follow any requirement or mandate that's issued by PDE, Allegheny County Health Department, or the Department of Health to determine any close contacts or contact tracing. So at the present time, there's no requirements for quarantine at the district level. All quarantine would be required to go through Allegheny County Health Department. So if we get notice from Allegheny County Health Department that individuals need to follow quarantine orders, we'll follow those orders. For diagnostic screening, we'll continue to ask parents to continue to screen their children at home. We'll put another link out there for updated signs and symptoms to COVID-19. Ask parents to continue to report positive cases to us. All of those information, that information as far as positive cases, where districts are required to report that to Allegheny County Health Department. So we'll continue, we don't report names, we just report. As children enter the building, we'll continue to do what we've had in the past where it's just a visual screen of individual students. If students are exhibiting any signs or symptoms, they'll be evaluated by the school nurse, very similar to any other health care agency. If an individual suspected of having COVID-19, at that point, they'd be required to wear a mask when they're being evaluated by the school nurse. The school nurse makes the determination that the child can go back into the general population. They make that decision. If they make the decision that the child needs to go home, they notify the parents and make that transition home. And then giving the advice to the parent either to get tested and return to school when symptoms are no longer present. There's many other portions of the health and safety plan that will continue to be implemented by the school district. And in many cases, what we've done throughout the pandemic, we've increased a lot of our disinfecting techniques. And a lot of these strategies that are in place here will continue, most likely for the years to follow, and probably embedded into our practice. That includes disinfecting wide areas of our buildings. We have electrostatic sprayers, and we've upgraded quite a bit in disinfectant sprays that can be used to mitigate a lot of the viruses, not just COVID, but then other viruses as well, so should create a healthier environment for our staff and students moving forward. Custodians will continue to disinfect the high-touch areas. We've done a lot of work on our HVAC systems. The HVAC system down at Crafton has been replaced. All of our unitments up here at the senior high school will be replaced by the end of the school year. I think there's 16 more units that are working on right now. That work is almost complete. Carnegie Elementary School, that HVAC system was replaced in the past few years and is operating properly. So we'll continue to work with our maintenance agreements just to make sure that we're continuously recirculating fresh air through the buildings. We also have air purifiers in strategic locations, locker rooms, health areas, that we'll continue to keep in place. Those pieces of equipment have already been purchased, and they don't cost much money to continue to run. Sanitizing stations will continue to be available across the district in classrooms. And then students and teachers also have access to sanitizing wipes that they can use to wipe off desk surfaces at any time. That was a procedure that we had in place prior to COVID at the elementary levels, entirely across the board. All students had the opportunity to clean their desks once or twice a day. We've moved that up to the secondary level, and we'll continue with that as well. We have all the equipment set up, and we self-fulfill the buckets that the sanitizing wipes are used. So that's a low cost to continue that. And then we'll continue to maintain our communication that we have with Allegheny County Health Department. We generally do that Thursdays, we get updates from Allegheny County Health Department through our weekly superintendent meeting at the UCI. Those are the major changes to the health and safety plan. There were some other small pieces that were eliminated. And in general, I think that covers the major portions. And that's pretty much all I had in regard to the health and safety plans. And Mrs. May, if you wanted to get any questions based on that?
I do. I have a few. I'm wondering if the board has, like, if you guys wanted to discuss this amongst yourselves. I'm curious to see if any of you have like thoughts or ideas on this or questions before I kind of dive into this. So I have a lot of questions.
Do you have any questions you would like to raise?
I have one question. In the diagnostic screening part of it, when a student would be maybe sent to the school nurse, would testing be available at the school nurse?
So that part's still, that's still in the plan, and we do have the availability to test. We have not issued tests yet. We can start doing that. If that's something, what to do, it's in the plan, and we can do it.
Is that the test to stay program that we talked about before?
So it's not, it's not the test to stay program. We have antigen tests on site. What we haven't done up to this point is sent out any paperwork to parents for their consent to give a COVID test during the cycle. But if that's a direction that we'd want to move towards, based on the plan, we could do it.
The testing would not be down without our consent.
Correct. And in terms of the other logistics involved in testing?
We can't hear you, any of you.
A lot to talk about, the machines. Thank you for.
It is like really loud behind us.
So in terms of the, must have been train of thought.
We're talking about ground consent.
No, beyond that, in terms of the other logistics involved in testing. I think at one point, we had talked about what would be required of the nurse in terms of safety equipment and that sort of thing. How would that happen?
So safety equipment that's provided to our nurses, we continue to provide an N95 mask. We have gowns, and we also have gloves, which are the recommended guard that health professionals have when they administer a test. The test that we have, individuals can actually, they're very similar to the at-home testing, where you can have the individual take the test themselves. It just involves swabbing of each nostril, taking that, putting it into a solution, holding it, mixing it for 15 seconds, and then you squeeze it as it comes out of the tube, and then you just put it onto another sheet, and then you wait for that sheet, then, I'm sorry, you drip out the, take three drops, and you put it onto a little reader, and then it turns either blue or red, or the combination of blue and red, and that gives the result.
But as far as the school nurse doing that, it seems like a fairly time-consuming process.
Takes 15 minutes from beginning to end. It would take 15 minutes to, once you put the drops on, you have to let it sit for 15 minutes. My experience has been that you start to see colors after five or 10 minutes, but they tell you wait the full 15. So yeah, a full cycle for an individual child would be anywhere between 15 to 20 minutes. So we could, if a child presented themselves with symptoms, we do have the capacity to do it. We haven't done it up to this point. I think based on the numbers that we have right now, I don't know if it would be a recommendation of mine to move forward with it. If we notice a higher number of cases, it's something that we put into the plan that if we wanted to activate that, we could. But that would involve sending out letters of consent to parents and getting that information back, so there would be some time involved with that.
Thanks.
Any other board questions?
I have a question. So if Allegheny County goes back into high risk, does this mean that our health and safety plan, I mean, goes back to kids masking? And is this going to be something forever? So the 2022 to 2023 school year, will we go back to higher risk if the CDC and Allegheny County is still doing monitoring of cases? Would kids and staff have to be wearing masks?
Yeah, so the way the plan is written is that at the present time, it's up to the individual to have the discretion of whether to wear a mask. The plan does not have written into it that when we reach the high level, that masks will be reissued. I believe what it does state is that if Allegheny County would move into the moderate or high-risk level, that the board can reconvene it to take a look at the health and safety plan. So as it presently stands, if tomorrow we would move to high risk, it does not automatically trigger the masking of individuals.
Has there been any indication as to how long districts are going to be required to have health and safety plans? I mean, is this, at this point, we just have one until we no longer are required to have one?
At the present time, we're required, out of the American Rescue Plan, to have a health and safety plan in place for the 2122 school year. There's been no mention at this time, at least I haven't heard of any, for the 2223 school year for requirements.
Any other board questions? Do you want to?
Well, I appreciate that. I'm glad, like, a few of you asked questions that I did have, and so I'm glad to see that, like, we're thinking these things through, because I worried. And so at the end of the 2022 school year, we're not sure then what happens with this, or even if that's going to be, because I know this is.
So that plan is written exclusively for 2122 school year. So my understanding is, as far as the way that the American Rescue Plan is written, at the end of this school year, that expires, and we have no requirements as of now to write in a new plan yet for the following year. So that plan, the way I understand it, expires at the end. We would have to revisit and draft a new plan for 2223.
If it's required.
If it's required.
Right.
God, if not. So then, you know, that brings up, as this is written, I was reading it through, it's just, I feel like a lot of things are just kind of like up in the air, a lot of like loose ends, kind of not sure, we'll see what happens. So, you know, as like we go into high, which I doubt what happened between now and the end here, I just, I'm a doctor, but I can see patterns. So why not just write in, you know, we are fully optional, and that's that? You know, why not just? I mean, most schools have just, you know, it's up to parents.
I think that's, that's pretty much the way it's written, that's what we wrote.
But it's not. It's, you know, when we're high, we'll come back and we'll see. It's just very wordy.
It would be nice if it was clear that parents will always have the choice.
That's where I want, because I don't ever want you guys making medical choices for my kids again. After the whole, you know, I'm going to write out a 504 plan for your children to go mask-free, oh, but we'll put a face shield on them. I question, I've questioned, I don't know who came up with that idea, but I question your ability to make choices, medical choices for my children. So I'm not comfortable until you guys don't have that power anymore, which, God willing, is not going to, it's going to be taken away from you. So I hope that's what's coming. And then, you know, things written like, school desks will be positioned to maximize the distance to the greatest extent possible, but at the teacher's discretion, they can put kids together in. So, you know, again, it's kind of, the way it's worded makes me go, well, why not just let teachers at their discretion allow kids? Because I know my kids hated being two seats separated in the auditorium watching movies for recess, you know, having to be separated from cafeteria, they yelled if they were too close. You know, why not just give these kids? Right, so it's the way these things are worded that just kind of makes me go, well. And so you also mentioned alternative rooms for eating lunch. Are these, are all schools back in the cafeteria now, or?
Not at the present time. No, like I said, we're still.
So what is the criteria for like going, like, just, we let them eat like normal? I know a lot of schools just are, or what's the?
There's a lot of schools that are doing that. There's still a lot of schools that are having kids eating their meals at a desk, too, that are three feet, four feet apart from each other in larger areas.
But what's the criteria? Now that we're in low, so why not just allow kids to be back in the cafeteria at all?
Yeah, so I think that's something we take a look at. Like I said, we have zero cases right now.
Right.
If those patterns continue, then I think we make the move to get kids back into the cafeterias and serve lunches as we previously have.
Okay.
But no, there's no strict, no strict set number or metric in regard to that.
When it feels right. That's, these are things I question, like, why? And I know that, like, to you as adults, I mean, you guys probably go eat your lunches like normal. There's probably not severe restrictions on adults. I mean, high school adults can go to the bar, be shorter and shorter with 3,000 other people, and, you know, there, I see it happen.
On the bus.
Right, grown adults are just not doing whatever.
Nobody, nobody, nobody sits next to me on the bus.
But for our children, I mean, these are kind of big deals. I mean, my one child who could not handle the, you know, the restrictions. And I mean, you look at, you look at testing grades across the board, across PA, these kids did not do well with the restrictions that we placed on them. That child now, after having seen so many restrictions lifted, came home yesterday for the first time in a long time with a 100% on this child's math test, and I see a huge difference. And so I really ask that you guys consider these things. I mean, these kids were cheering the moments that they got to be next to each other in the cafeteria, like, yay, we can now play board games together recess instead of sit in the cafeteria or sit in the auditorium several feet apart, when you know adults aren't doing that. You guys aren't several seats apart in here. So I, you know, let's give these kids their normalcy. I have a child who's never been to school in a normal capacity. And I was, you asked about contact tracing. It's like, well, we're not doing that, but we could adopt some testing in the future, which I would immediately opt out of. You know, so what would, what would have us go to that testing? And is this district pursuing test to stay, or is that dead in the water?
I've not filled out any paperwork for that. There's paperwork that's required. We are, we're lined up with Ginkgo Bioworks.
Okay.
That provides us the antigen tests.
Okay.
But there's a whole other step that's required to go into test to stay, which we've not filled out.
Okay, I do appreciate that, because my next question was going to be about, you know, how many kids, I don't know if you have the numbers, who were sent, like, healthy children sent home to quarantine because they were contact traced and, contact traced, and then ended up with COVID. I know in other districts where they've reported numbers, it's been like .02 or some outrageously low number. So I, you know, I don't view test to stay as.
Stephanie, if it would be easier if you would want to send Dr. Kreider an email with the list of questions that you have, he can respond to that.
I might like to hear the questions, the answers to her questions.
Right, I have questions and emails all the time, and I don't often get a response. And it's helpful for me to speak this out with board members. I want you to see my process. I know you do kind of read my emails. I question that, and I, you know, I want us to go through this questioning process, because I think it's important. And I think, you know, in our society, so many people have just been led down. And I blame our media. We've been led out down absolute stupidity. And I want to bring back, like, this questioning process, that let's get together, talk about this process. So, you know, as questions do come up, and I know it's easier to think through and write that down in email, I just, I think it's helpful to do this in person, on camera, et cetera. So that's, I'm wondering if that kind of draws any questions to anybody else along with that?
I just wanted to, like, on the bus, nobody takes, the bus, it don't matter that you're sitting next to somebody. Nobody knows where anybody sits. There's no contact tracing. But in school, it's different. Like, what's the difference? Nobody was contact tracing on buses.
It could be that Rachel knows your names, but could you make sure that you give your names to Rachel for record?
For what? Oh, AMC, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So what's the difference on the bus, and then you come to school and you got all these rules? That's all. I just want to know.
I'm not sure what rules you're referring to.
Rules for the COVID. You didn't have them on the bus. There was no contact tracing on the buses. The bus driver last, last time I was here said that, she had somebody sitting behind her, and they never contacted her that they had it. I mean, so you're on the bus, maybe you need monitors, you need to hire monitors for the bus and see where everybody's sitting. I don't know if you're going to go into that mode again.
I think we're moving away.
When you come to school, you got all these rules.
Point is, we're moving away from that mode.
Yeah, we're moving away from it, but you might come, go back to it.
I think it's.
That's not in the health and safety plan.
You have all these rules, but there's no rules on the bus. So it's okay on the bus, but it's not okay in the school. I don't know. It's just stupid.
Okay, thank you.
This is Ann Gargis for the record. I think what I'm taking away from what Pam's sharing is that there's a lot of inconsistency. And when there's a lot of inconsistency with the way that you're treating kids, whether it's on the bus, or it's in the cafeteria, or it's classroom to classroom, it's hard for them to understand, what really am I doing? Am I safe? Am I not safe? And that's where I think mental health is taking a toll. So where you can be consistent, it would be advisable.
And my little kids are asking these questions as well. They'll say, like, Mom, so in this class, we had to do this, but then we're in the hall, and, you know, we have to, you know. So they're noticing these inconsistencies, and I'm grateful. I'm grateful that they're asking questions of authority. They're asking questions that, you know, are popping into their head. I'm grateful that my kids are being given this lesson in how to question authority. And so for that, I do appreciate that, but, you know, they, you're the ones who are supposed to be in charge of their education. And when they're questioning things, and when they're questioning the adults who are in charge, you know, you're ruining their ability to trust the institution that I'm forced to give them over to. My other question I didn't bring up, it talks about staff screening students based on visual signs of symptoms and question students regarding their health to the greatest extent possible. So how is that going to be done? What kind of questions and what kind of screening are these kids getting upon arrival? I see my kids just, you know, waltz in.
Very, very consistent as it's been done throughout the course of the school year. So it's very much of a visual screening. And the questioning part would come in, that's more from the school nurse, if an individual's exhibiting signs or symptoms.
It says upon arrival.
Right.
They're being, so they're not being questioned upon arrival, just?
It's not questioned. Screen, visual signs, visual signs when they enter.
It says, and question students regarding their health.
That would be done by the school nurse. That's, we've been doing that all year.
If a visual inspection yields something suspicious, then they might question the person to verify their.
Because it wasn't written that way. Okay, I just kind of wanted to, you know, point out that, and I think, you know, it is a wordy health and safety plan. You know, I want all of you to kind of look through this and think about, you know, what, if we put this wording in, what does that mean? What is that going to be for the future? You know, I'm all for, you know, least restrictive environment at this point. Parents' choice, least restrictive, you know, sick kids, send them to the nurse, evaluate the nurse. But beyond that, you know, you're not making health choices for kids anymore, so.
The only other thing I would question, too, is the notion that we test kids for COVID at school. I'm just trying to see, like, what value that would bring to either the child or the school? Because if a child is sick enough for you to want to test them for COVID here, you would send them home, I'm hoping, anyway. And then it should be up to the parent to administer that.
That's where the consent comes in. That's where the consent comes in place from the parent. It basically saves the parent the time and energy from going to a testing agency or relying upon tests that they have in the home. If the parent wants us to do it, we'll issue it right here. It's a convenience factor for parents.
Okay. I wouldn't peep it that way, but I could see what you're saying.
We've never done it. We don't want to do it, but especially six months ago when the tests weren't widely available, some families were saying, hey, I'm a. some families were saying, hey, I'm at work, I don't have anything at home, could you test my child if we need to? So that's why it's in there if we need.
Just feels like an expense for the school and a potential liability.
It's for you, it's monopoly money.
I do have a question, but this is probably one you probably went over, maybe even last time. So if, if, and you might have gone over this, this is going to be easy, I know you're all kind of tech talk about this already. I can tell by your faces, I watched the meeting. So if, if a parent thinks that they're, or they're sick and they get home and they get tested, are you going to accept the regular home care tests? Like, we got our government ones, and then you have the ones you can buy, or are you going to require like, I think you might have talked about this in January, but I can't remember. Are you going to require like, is that at home testing okay? Or is it, or are they going to have to get it done at like their re-attrition? Or, I'm just, I don't know if you went over it or not, I didn't hear it, and I don't see it.
Is, is, is the question designated towards if a child tests positive?
Yeah, so if they test positive, what test do you, I mean, or negative? Are you guys picky about what the test is?
No, because testing positive, we've always relied.
Well, I mean, it's, yes, your.
We've always relied 100% on self-reporting. You know, you could, you could go to the doctor, you could get tested by your doctor, test positive, you report it to Allegheny County, but then you don't report it to us, we don't know.
Right, that's why the county.
They, they've been inundated with so many cases. The original plan was for Allegheny County to report back any child that's in the schoolhouse or who does extracurriculars, and they would report that back to us. It happened occasionally, but not on a regular basis where we got that information back from them.
I kind of figured, but I just wanted to double check, because some places are starting to require it, like it to be an official, like I was looking at going to a Fall in Water. And Fall in Water is requiring tests, you can't go unless you test negative, and it has to be a test site like West Diagnostics.
Yeah.
You can't even do a home test.
The only language we put in there that was last time, I can't recall exactly why we put it in, but it was, we did not honor the at-home test because we didn't, one, we didn't know if it was an FDA-approved test.
That was what I thought was.
It was issued.
The FDA's.
Yeah.
Well, when my kids tested negative to try to come back to school when they were quarantined unnecessarily, you would not accept a home test as a negative test.
Correct, right.
From my child, from other children in the school, you did. So it's a good question.
Okay.
I want to add the question, so like allergy season's coming up, and you're going to have a lot of kids that are, you're going to look at and think, oh my god, they may have COVID. What do they have to do to prove that they don't need quarantine? Do they have to go and get an FDA-approved test and come back and say, look, I have allergies? Like, like what are you going to do for like those kids?
No, I think our nurses will be able to, to assess that, it's going to be tricky naturally when you're exhibiting signs and symptoms of, of, of COVID, but we rely on our, our health staff to make that determination of whether or not they're, they're allergy-related, do they have a history of allergies? Yep.
So, so like if the parent says, or do they call the parent, say he might have COVID, you want us to test them, and I say, no, he's got allergies, he's had allergies forever, you guys would be like, okay, you're not going to require testing and whatnot, you're.
Would never require the testing.
Well, I mean, just to say that you've got a quarantine, you wouldn't require testing to quarantine, you just say, okay, we know your kid has allergies, you're good.
Very possible.
Okay.
You know, it's. I know you are, that's a tricky one, it is.
I will say Ashley Schaefer is good at that, because my son has a lot like allergy, asthma issues. He was looked at like a week or two ago, and she's like, well, it's just this one symptom, and he's got allergies, right? And I said, yes, because all right, he's good. Thank God, so we rely on her.
Any other health and safety questions? If not, we'll move on, so boards under section two, we've got minutes in previous meetings. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the voting meeting, minutes of voting meeting in February 15th, 2022. And that's the only one, so my fault, do I have a motion for that one? The page turned, cut, sorry. Move consecutive, thank you, any discussion or questions? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed aye. Motion carries. I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed real estate matters, pending litigation, and personnel issues. Turn it over to Dr. Crider for any superintendent reports.
That was the gist of the superintendent report.
All right, wonderful, that was short and sweet, all right. Moving on to section four, we've got a couple of items, four items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the 2021, 2022 conference and field trips, and the list additions, addition of two conference field trip lists for 21, 22. Number two, to approve the tennis court agreement between the Borough of Roswell Farms and the Carleton School District. Number three, to approve the 2022, 2023 revised school calendar submitted. And number four, the 2021, 2022 Carleton School District Health and Safety Plan with revisions as submitted and just discussed. Motion for those four items. Moved and seconded, thank you. Any conversation or questions? If not, vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed aye. Motion carries, under section five, finance, we have two items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the bills for February 24th, 2022, the amount of $432,279.24. Number two, the pool roof replacement proposal, alternate number one, scope of work, pool roof replacement only as submitted. I have a motion for those two items under section five.
I see.
Next one, I'm a second. You seconded or opposed? Oh, you're first, so yeah, Chris second, all right, thank you. Any discussions or questions?
So I'm, I'm looking at the pool roof proposal, we've talked about that just a little bit. So that's option, the most responsible bidder was Tuscano Mayor, who you?
Yes.
And this is, this is a little bit.
Yes, yes, we, we worked with that, that firm who took care of, that's Garland. They took care of all the bidding, the posting, the notifications and so on, and then guided through the bid process. And we put two different options out there, the, the, between the, the two different types to, to address the issues. The big issues up there, the membrane is starting to deteriorate, water is starting to infiltrate in through and getting all the insulation and so on, so looking at that, that replacement. It's a solid group, can get in here most likely by mid to midsummer. And indicated that even if the project goes into the beginning of the school year, they don't use any adhesives or any type of materials that would create a, a health issue for our children. So, and as far as the location being above the pool area, would not, not have a lot of noise or distraction to, to school functions. So it should be good to go.
John, Garland is a roofing type, and it's also a company, so we're going to get the Garland roofing type, right?
That's correct.
Okay, but Tuscano is going to install it?
Yes, yeah, so Tuscano, they purchase the roofing material from Garland directly.
Okay.
And that's, that's where they get it. Any other questions? If not, let's vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed aye. Motion carries. Under section six, we have seven items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the additions to the 2021, 2022 athletic supplemental list with new sponsors as submitted. Stipendents for supplemental position holders is contingent upon completion of a full school year and will be prorated in the event of a shortened or canceled season due to unforeseen circumstances. Number two, the leaves of absence for employee ACT 93-2122-12. Number three, to approve the following teachers as after-school tutors for the junior senior high school, retroactive to February 22nd, 2022, through June 3rd, 2022, at the teacher's per day rate and consistent with the terms of the CFT collective bargaining unit agreement. Christine Garland, mathematics. Rebecca Malavich, mathematics. William Polonis, science. Wendy Steiner, ELA. Laura Beg, social studies. Cindy Eddy, open electors. Number four, to approve Michael Cozy as the scholastic aptitude test prep teacher for mathematics effective March 12th through April 30th, 2022, at the teacher's per day rate and consistent with the terms of the CFT collective bargaining unit agreement. Number five, the letter of intent to retire submitted by Crafton and Carnegie Elementary Guidance Counselor Sherri Lee, effective April 25th, 2022, and consistent with the terms of the CFT collective bargaining unit agreement. Number six, the letter of intent to retire submitted by Crafton Elementary Music Teacher Mike Priori, effective June 10th, 2022, and consistent with the terms of the CFT collective bargaining unit agreement. And lastly, the letter of intent to retire submitted by Carnegie Elementary Teacher Susan Cantwell, effective June 10th, 2022, and consistent with the terms of the CFT collective bargaining unit agreement. I have a motion for those seven items.
Seven.
Second.
Move consecutive, thank you, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed aye. Motion carries, thank you. Section seven, student activities, any board member, any questions, or Dr. Crider, any comments for that?
I have a question, do I need to hold this till the end, or?
Yeah, open forum, that's okay, that'll be, that'll be coming up very shortly.
Okay.
Old business, any director, any old business they'd like to address? None? New business, any director, any new business they'd like to address?
Yes, I'd like to thank John Backadoo and Emily Skirtich. They reached out to me to get the list of the kids who, of Ukrainians and who might be coming into school with great emotional load. And it's a wonderful thing, please, Ed, John, get back to them to thank you.
I'll, I'll do that, George, yes, and that's one thing they, they wanted to proactively look at were children who had families in Ukraine, just to make sure that if there's any special types of accommodation they need, that they would have, or any type of counseling services, because we recognize that a lot of families are being broken at this time, going through some troubling times. Any resources we can provide is something to try to do.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Any other group visits from the director? If not, open forum, aye.
The only question I had was on the tutoring program that you guys just voted to approve, and it being retroactive to February 22nd. I was wondering why that was retroactive, is that a program that was already in place? And if it is, what are we doing to communicate it to families and students that it's available?
Yeah, so that's, that's the, um, for students who are currently failing coursework during this school year, would have received notification to.
Do they have to be failing, or do they just maybe need to catch up?
For, for this one, it's for, it's for individuals who are failing, it was this program, yeah. I would say if, if you have children that are struggling, that you're looking for additional help to reach out to the school.
I've done that, and I think that's why this program exists, although I brought it up, discussed it with Mr. Locker, and he said he was going to try to put it in place, get it approved, here it is now approved. My children won't qualify because they're not failing.
This is actually, it's, it's the same program we, we ran last year, and also ran in the, in the fall.
So you're not providing any tutoring assistance to kids who have been quarantined and had access to no public, or no, no one-on-one instruction? This is just for kids that are failing?
Correct, that's.
Why are we discriminating who can sign up for tutoring?
What we're looking at here is, is credit recovery to take place during the course of the regular school year, so that students don't have to come to summer programming.
My point is, you wait for kids to be failing to help them, and that's a problem. Now, I'd like to know also how you're applying all of the money that we've received from the ESAR grants that are supposed to be filling gaps in education from COVID, from the pandemic.
Yeah, so this is, this is part of it, we also have the summer.
So again, you're waiting for kids to fail before you'll help them or apply any of those funds. I want to be clear and on the record.
Yeah.
Anne Gargis.
Yeah, I don't think that's accurate, I think we continue to work with kids during the normal instructional day.
I don't think you do. I don't think that you can work with them during the regular instructional day, when they're supposed to be receiving regular instruction, to make up the instruction that they didn't get when they were quarantined.
Yeah, I'll say that can kind of be an issue, I've, I've been looking for a tutor for my child who's not failing, but has backslid severely, and I was recommended to a teacher who was already booked up. And so there are some huge gaps, and I, I agreed to catch these kids, because I don't want to see my, now luckily, you know, my child, I think his mental state has been improved a lot, and that child's been doing a lot better, but it's been a struggle getting that child help, because math makes me want to cry too. So I, I think, I think it's a problem.
Yeah. Like, my son, he's in advanced classes, and on the PSSA last year, he got like a really bad, like bad, like totally bad. So are you making sure like that was algebra, I think, and now he's in advanced geometry? So does he not know the algebra, algebra, but he knows, he knows the geometry? So obviously on the PSSA, he must have flunked it. And he got advanced in the science and the English, so I'm kind of having an issue with that. Like, how could that happen? He gets straight A's and he flunks on the PSSA.
That does seem, that does seem a lot, I, I know.
Do they not target these kids and maybe check to see that they know the material?
I think the question you're asking is something the entire world is struggling with. We collectively have lost 18 months or 20 months of life. And for students who are learning actively during that time period, everybody missed something. It might vary by child, how much was missed and how much that impacted them, but everybody around the world is, is impacted, so.
Well, we've given close to $5 million to try to correct the problem, from what the ESAR grants have said. We've been approved for almost $5 million to correct it, and what I'm hearing from you is we're not doing anything until a child fails. Now, I think that also takes another mental health toll on a child, to have them feel like they're failing before we'll give them any kind of help. Now, I have to imagine that we can do better than that.
Now, we also, we have, as a part of that, we have at least $750,000 that are designated towards new curriculum. And as far as the new curriculum recommendations that will come forward, we have opportunities for remediation built into them, also accelerated learning as well, so that as we move through the next several years, because it will take time to totally remediate and get, get the students back to where they need to be, there's some agencies that are reporting, it's going to take five years for some students to be brought back up to speed. And that's, that's worldwide, it's not just a Carleton issue. So I know that the curriculum that Dr. Manch is looking into is looking into various types of curriculum that have accelerated and remediation types of activities that are built into with technology software and also different types.
What are we doing today?
Continue to work with.
We're waiting for kids to fail and then providing a tutor. I just want to be clear, I'm not trying to be flip, what are, what are we doing today?
Continue to work with kids in the classroom, actively monitor their, their progress and get them back up to speed.
How do you, how do you see that as a, as a good solution, or a good enough solution? What you're telling me is that your child is coming to school, we're going to make them responsible to do all of the required coursework today, and at the same time they're doing all the required coursework today, they're going to make up all of the required coursework from the 10, 20, or 30 days they were quarantined. And we're just going to, you know, do that. Like, that's, that's not, that's not a plan, you, you aren't doing anything extra for the child except be there in the classroom when they should be doing the classroom and the assignments that are assigned that day. So I don't understand how they're supposed to do the work that's assigned that day and miraculously do the work that was, that they missed just because the teacher's in the classroom teaching a whole host of other children? That you can't tell me that my child's able to make up work from last month just because he's in the classroom with a teacher trying to teach today's classwork to a classroom full of kids trying to learn today.
So they have to struggle during the quarantine period, they didn't catch the material, they didn't.
They weren't taught the material, that's the problem. You had no virtual learning option, you gave them no in-person instruction. You gave them a list of things to do on their own. And then, you know, they should just be able to do it when they get back into school and get to look at their teacher. That's ridiculous. That's why I petitioned and went and tried to work with the school and have countless emails and, and phone calls and face-to-face meetings with teachers about how to get caught. and face-to-face meetings with teachers about how to get caught up. This tutoring was a wonderful idea. I just don't understand why we're limiting it and, and just giving it to kids who are, who are failing. In order to, in order to qualify for extra help, you need to be failing. And that's what I'm hearing from you all today.
I think you have, I think you have a fair point.
Okay. Well, let's fix it then.
I don't know what the answer is. I know teaching staff is, is limited, but I, as a personal opinion, I agree we should do whatever we can for all kids who are being impacted by the pandemic. So I don't know what that means.
I'd like to just add on to this because now that my, two of my children have been in a different school since October, I can tell you also from having relatives in Florida that this is not as universal as you think. It has everything to do with the policies that school districts decide to take during this. So like my kids, Hunter in particular, is, he's been identified now at his new school as having a little bit of learning loss. His, his, the kids that are around him do not because they, they went into quarantine for two months and then they were back in school in-person learning all last year. So their kids at that, that school had very short amount of time if they were not in the classroom. And then they were right back in. They were masked for a short time, but they had a full year of learning. And so what I'm seeing and I'm talking to the teachers there is they're saying the public school kids that are coming into the school now, they have these issues. The kids that they have there that were previous do not. So this is why it matters. This is why we show up and we bitch and we moan about policy. Okay? Is because now I have two, two, I have a direct comparison between a school that took the policies that I approved of and the policies that you chose, and I'm seeing a complete difference in my kids. And it's not like, oh, well, we all just have to catch up. The kids in Hunter's classroom do not. Hunter does. Because Hunter had a lot of learning loss because he was cyber and then he didn't have it. Second half of his second grade year was kind of Google Classroom and then he didn't have in-person learning until February. Doesn't really know his time stamps and he's trying to catch up to everybody else right now. Kids that didn't have any of those gaps because their, their school decided not to do any of those things. So I'm just saying like, we can't just, we can't just say, oh, well, this is everybody because it's not. It has everything to do with your policy decisions.
You can't just say it's going to take five years.
As you move forward, it matters what you do because it is affecting the kids. And it is, sure, it's, it's a problem with other districts. But if you look at schools that didn't do this, their kids are not struggling like ours. So your policy decisions actually had an effect on them, just like we were saying with masking that it was going to have an effect. We weren't imagining it. We were seeing it. I have tons of relatives in Florida and they weren't masked when my kids were. And they're not having the issues and they were in person and ours weren't.
Florida has a different set of criteria.
They certainly do. I mean, go look at the.
Freedom of criteria.
That's just my point. And I'm just saying like, this is why it matters what policy decisions you've made all along, all the way from last year, keeping everybody at home as long as you did. And then going back to in-person learning. It has affected the kids and then the quarantine is just a long string of issues the district is going to be dealing with for a long time and our kids are going to be dealing with. My kids are out of this district, two of them, and they're still dealing with it. So it matters. That's why I think everybody is just like upset and I'm not, I, I want things to move forward and I want it to be good for our kids. That's the reason I'm here. So, I mean, I could not come to these meetings, but I still have one in the district and I, I care about her and all the other kids that are in this district. So.
Well, one other thing, I'm sure your underschool sees that public schools, I'm seeing an issue with a lot of public schools, is the level of rigor and expectations has, and again, a lot of it's pandemic related, but has tanked. And so I'm, you know, I'm constantly asking my kids about, well, if you, you didn't turn your homework on time, what was the consequence? There wasn't a consequence. And so we got to bring up that rigor again. We got to bring up those high expectations. I know like, you know, these kids' emotional issues are there as well, you know. As an educator myself, I know the, the meetings I've had to sit through on kids' social, emotional health and whatnot. But we got to bring up their, their expectations. We got to have, we got to, you know, expect things from these kids. Bring up that rigor. They can do it. We got to get back to normal.
I think too, a lot of the mental health stuff doesn't, it's not because of structure. It's because of a lack of structure.
It is. Absolutely.
Because of a lack of structure or a lack of consistency.
Yep. So they can't handle when there are consequences and so they fall apart. And we got to get, get away from that.
Any other open forum, Mrs. Robb?
Michelle Robb. I just had a question regarding snow days. I don't anticipate any more this year, but for future. I know this year we tried a new thing where we would do the remote learning. It really was a remote learning. It was really a day off school. The kids would have some homework to do, but especially whenever last year when we weren't COVID, they, they had that set schedule and they would go through their periods and they would have virtuels with every teacher. And that's kind of what I anticipated our remote days to be and they weren't. I don't know if, I'm all for like, I, I love the fact when we have a snow day, not having to make it up. But if we're going to do that, can we actually have it like a real remote day? Not just, because it really has been. It was just, we only had a couple of them, but they were just days off. And days off, they don't have to make up now, but I don't know if there's a way that we could implement the full instruction.
Yeah, the plans for FID days get submitted to the state for approval. I believe we're up for reapproval, not this year, but the following. We can take a look at a different structure.
But it's not like, because last year we had, we knew how to do remote learning. I mean, like I, I think, no, at the elementary school, that's a different issue. But I don't know, at the high school, I think a lot of the teachers did a really good job with remote learning. And so they know how to do it, like, but we just do that.
Yeah, the, the FID application that we used this year was actually submitted right before COVID started or during, during COVID, during the two thousand twenty, I believe in the spring. And that was, that was the result of meetings that I've had, that I had at that point at our elementary schools to implement FID days that there was an interest in, in doing those. We filled out the application and got those through. Those are things we can go back and take a look at.
So FID days, are they just days where?
That's, that's, that's your remote days. Your districts are allowed up to five days to use what's called a FID flexible instruction day to use for emergencies, weather-related issues and so on, but you're, you're capped at using five.
And so by calling it a FID day, it's not a day you have to make up, but it really doesn't have to follow instruction?
Your perception that the rigor of the content and the instruction was not normal or?
Correct.
It was more just a day off as opposed to.
Correct. Yeah. When you see a teacher out at nine, he wouldn't say, are you in school today? They're like, oh, I don't know. I'll be there until, I, I, you know, I have office hours at eleven-thirty or whatever, you know, yeah, yeah.
And your point is that the, we, we showed what a FID day could look like.
Correct.
Previous year where it was not a full in-person day, but it was in close.
You touched base with every teacher in every class and there was some instruction there and then the kids had work. It was, it was really.
Yeah, we did. We ran the abbreviated schedules where they met as a class.
Right. Like when we were doing remote learning, that's what they would do. They would meet every period.
Right. And that's where this plan was written and approved prior to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. It was written in the spring of twenty twenty.
Any other open forum questions?
On that P S S A, now my son like fails a nap. Do they not go back and check these kids that fail every year to see what the problem is?
Well, we had this conversation.
I talked to you.
Yes, you did. We talked on a telephone. And, you know, the explanation.
He thought you, you thought that he has a soft number. I asked him about that.
Yeah. If I would look at that and I looked at his entire test scores, you know, when he, when we looked at the, his P S S A and how low that score was as opposed to his Keystone score, which he missed proficiency by one question, four points. You know, I kind of took an educated guess and said, it's a very strong possibility that the student might have missed like one question in the, in the, in the bubble sheet, which is causing the rest of his answers to go askew, to go that low. You know, because those were two so far off base.
Do they let you retake that or?
Well, the P S S A is really not something that he's going to have to retake. Now, the Keystone for four, for the four points, you know, he could retake the test and I'd be like, I volunteered to tutor myself.
I talked to him about it, yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to know, like every year when kids do bad on that, it's like, you get a flunking. To me, that's a flunking.
Yes, it doesn't count.
But I mean, that's just gauging how your school taught your kids that year. Don't you look at that?
They do look at that.
Yeah, we do. And, you know, under a normal year, prior to, prior to COVID, I, I do a statistical analysis on the P S S A scores. And a lot of the times I will take a look at the anchor standards and eligible content of the P S S A to say, which ones are our kids doing well on, which one are they not doing well on? We do some data analysis with the teachers and say, here's some things we might want to pay attention to going into next year as prerequisite skills for other skills, so to speak.
I just thought that they could give them something, a test to gauge them.
We, we do. We, we also have something that we give twice a year. It's called the class of diagnostic tools. A lot of the kids at the middle school are taking it right now. And it kind of says, where are we within relationship to our anchor standards and eligible content at grade level?
I mean, I just have higher standards for my kid.
Yes.
I mean, I want him to go to college and, you know, I don't want him to be behind because school didn't have him up to his standard.
So we, we do look at those things. I think your, your son's what, ninth grade now? So he probably won't be taking one for, for algebra, but he'll probably be taking a C D T for biology. And when the teacher gets to report, they'll see where he probably needs some extra work.
Like he said, he's taking two in a row. Is that only in eighth grade?
For the algebra one?
Yeah.
For, for us, most of our ninth graders take it.
In eighth grade?
No, they take it ninth grade. We have a handful, maybe twenty-five percent to take.
I mean, I'm just with really the bottom of that. So I'm a little concerned.
Like going back to the P S S A, if I was, if I was going to make an educated guess in a bet, I bet you that's what happened. Because the, the, the score was just below basic. It was just so low that something, you had a feeling that there was something wrong in there. And my guess was he probably missed a question somewhere in there, left it blank. And then, you know, question, answer question three went to four, four went to five, five went to six. That's kind of what we talked about on the telephone. But there's no way I can go back and verify that.
If they help kids, I mean, any kid that gets a failing one on a P S S A the year before.
Yeah, we look at those things.
They don't know what they're doing, obviously. I mean, I mean, he must, but I mean, I don't know how he's, he's in higher learning this year now.
He's in geometry right now. Geometry is algebra-based. He's probably learning a little bit more algebra as he's going along.
Any other open forum questions or comments?
I just want to say something. Jim, was it eighteen years ago, we were sitting in those seats and attacking the fans? I applaud you because you're doing what we did fifteen or eighteen years.
I know your son too.
Really. Thanks for being good parents. We should have this place full of parents, but thank you, thank you, thank you.
I can come back next time.
We don't want to attack you guys. I mean, I know it's like.
Right, Jim, well, twelve years.
Any other questions or comments for open forum? Board, any other open forum questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Move consecutive. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. You are adjourned. Thank you.